Welcome, everyone. We are here for a work session. And joining me tonight are board members Michelle Shu, Gordon Leifer, Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, and Laurel O'Rourke. The purpose of this work session is for the board to work on finalizing our goals for the school year 2022-2023. And in the name of time, I'm going to simply hand it off to board member Gordon Leifer to lead us through the proposal that you all received on Monday.
Thank you. So if everybody got that, I know both the things from Robin Cork and then the write-up that I did that Maya sent out, I just want to take a couple of minutes and explain what Maya and I are thinking about this proposal. And then obviously, we'll have a long discussion. So basically, I think we said earlier in the year that we didn't want to pick goals that are things that we didn't want, wanted to distinguish between goals and things that we have to do anyway, like passing the budget or going through the Stupid Investment Act process. And then our goals wanted to be like additional discretionary special things that we wanted to put effort into. So you know, what always limits this is how much time and energy board members have, and then how much time and energy district staff and everybody else who has to work with us on things have. So our basic approach to this is to take the big, the big areas, and not everything is a big area, but there are a number of big areas. And see if we can get a couple of people on the board who are willing to take the lead on that to work in most cases in some kind of working group together with district leadership, school level staff, and where appropriate, students, parents, and community members to figure out what's the best way forward. And then bring that back to the board in both in terms of findings, reportings, and where appropriate recommendations. So the basic idea is that if we don't do something where like all seven of us are equally involved in every area, but say there'd be, I don't know, one, two, three people who take the lead on different areas, that we can do more by having a few people go in deep on something and then bring it back to the rest of the board. So the, the proposal that we shared follows the same broad areas that Robin Cork laid out in their report and basically follows their categorization. Within the four broad areas that they laid out, there were 16 specific proposals. And you saw them all. Those were all in the document that I wrote up. Within those four broad areas, there were 16 proposals. Some of those can be addressed in pretty clear cut and discreet ways. Like, I think we've already decided to put on the agenda of an upcoming meeting, the question of our relationship with OSBA. And the issue of expulsions came up. It's not like we know what we're going to do, but it seemed like we know this is a pretty clear thing. We want to see fewer expulsions and we want to make sure that they're not disproportionately falling on students of color, students from low income families, or other historically marginalized groups of students. And that that could be both something we want to see the district do and that we want to, we might want to have a policy as a board. So it's not that we know exactly what we want to do, but the, the proposal of what we want to look at is pretty clear. There are some other things where at this point, what we want is to get reports from the district on what they're doing and monitor that progress because the district is already moving in the direction that we want to see happen. But then there are, you know, the hardest things is there were five kind of big areas of goals that seem like they're going to require significant work even to get to the point of saying, here's exactly what we want to do. And that that work makes sense to happen in some kind of task force or working group together with district leadership, with educators, school staff, and in some cases, students, parents, and community members. And those five areas are, you know, roughly making equity real. And there's, you know, several different parts of that, but implementing equity in a serious way, improving inclusion and outcomes for students with disabilities, strengthening and expanding the number of CTE pathways, improving mental health supports, both in terms of the services offered and the way in which daily school life is structured for students and staff. And then supporting, creating more engaging classes, which would include also moving away from a standardized test base, you know, focused form of education and improving educator morale and retention. So on, on these five, you know, the way we were thinking about it is that some of these have some pieces that there are already concrete proposals that the board could look at. But at least in significant parts of each of these five areas, we have a better sense of the problem than of the solution. And identifying what the solution is probably takes fairly deep discussion with, with other partners, both in the community and within the district and staff. So that we bring together like the full range of expertise to figure out what's the smartest thing to go? What's the smartest way to go about advancing these goals? And some of these obviously are things we're not going to complete this year. So I know I saw the, the thing that you sent out Laurel about SMART goals, which probably other people have seen elsewhere, since it's something I think that is used in many places across the country or the world and part of having the acronym of SNART. I forget all of them, but it, oh, here it is. Specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-related. So we don't have goals that are so vague and fluffy that you can't tell if you accomplish them or even if you're getting closer. And so what, what we're thinking is like that that makes sense, but that in some, in some of these, we don't yet know, like, we know what the big picture goal is, and we don't yet know what the specific measurable steps are that we want to take. Or we don't know if they're going to be doable this year. Like, I could say, you know what, I've been pushing for a long time to say we should have a survey of teachers to find out how much time is spent administering standardized tests. So that's, that's kind of specific and measurable, but whether it's going to be doable this spring depends on how burnt out teachers are and if they'll be able, if enough teachers will be able and willing to participate in something like that. And if EA will be able to participate in, in crafting it and rolling it out. So there are some things where I think we don't know exactly what the SMART goals are, and there are others where we know what they are, but we don't yet know. Are we realistically going to be able to do these this year? And so the idea, so our proposal is that instead of saying, we're going to do this and we're not going to do that, that if among us, there, there are board members who are willing to take on leadership in each of these five areas that we want to go forward on all of them, have mid-year check-ins with a goal of figuring out either what are the SMART goals we should have for each of these, or which ones are realistic to do this year and which ones are we going to end up having to do later on? So that's the basic proposal. I know in some of these areas, we already have people, we already have a committee and people who are, who are working on it. We have the Equity Committee and in others, we don't. In places where we don't, our thought is that we would identify that leadership in the same way we do all committees, which is that Maya and I would talk to everybody else on the board, come up with recommendations, and that would come back to the board as a whole to either approve, reject, or change. So in brief, that's that you all have the written proposal, but that's kind of the overview of the logic of this proposal. So then I'll turn it back to you, Maya, to have.
Proposal is one of the three documents you sent, because I saw nothing that said proposal.
It says, let me find out exactly what it's.
Document that, that we sent that was not by Robin and that in the document itself that it identified itself as a proposal.
I think it's Laurel, I think that it's a Word document called 4J Board Goals for 2223 Summary GL 10922. So that's my fault for not having clearly identified that as the proposal, but that's the, that is the proposal of how the goals lay out and a more detailed version of what I just said.
Judy, I see your hand up.
Yeah, so I did, I did see that document and got to review it, but honestly, until you were speaking, Gordon, I thought the grid that you got, you did the with the four buckets and the 16 proposals under it with suggestions was what you were recommending. I did not get. So now I see these five other bullets as big issues. But I also thought these were also laid out, so I don't, are they aligned in the grid?
Yes, they are. And you know, I, I think I tried to describe this, maybe I didn't do a good enough job. But the, the five things, right, the five things are just that are described on page.
I think, yeah.
Share your screen, Gordon, so we can look at it together at the same time. Only if you, I can do it if you'd like.
Maybe I have a bunch of junk up here. It's, but it's on the second page, there are those five bullets and I understand, I think Judy, the confusion is my fault because I think they do map on, but they don't map on like exactly deeply, here's, you know, community engagement and here's that proposal. But those 16, the 16 proposals that we, the various board members made in those categories do map onto those five bullets that are on the second page there, which are the same things that I just read out. So each of those, each of those 16 things, I mean, I think some of them are the thing about OSBA's relationship, we know that we're going to address, right? But those five things are the kind of bigger things where we think that we need to have something like a task group or a task force or working group to figure out what is the right way to move forward.
Well, the one that fell off the list, if I could just, that's why I asked the question that because it was unclear and I'm happy to clarify the one, I think Kirti and I and maybe one other board member was talking about more in different ways for parent engagement, but I don't see anything in the five buckets or.
So you are, you are totally correct. And I apologize about that. And the truth is, I didn't know, yes, you and Kirti, and I think some other people maybe too, said we should have more ways of parent engagement. And I know Kirti said you shouldn't have to just run for the board or, or, or be in the PTA. So I wasn't sure, I guess that's something that we could add, you're right.
I would think to me, I was prepared to talk a little bit more about ways we could address it tonight. So whenever that's appropriate, I could bring it up.
Yep, and I guess we could, we or you could say like, do we want to do that as part of SIA, as part of the budget process, as part of? Because that, I guess, part of my difficulty in figuring out what to do with that, when I looked at that, is it seems like something that applies across a whole lot of these areas as opposed to being like, oh, we're going to have a standalone committee on parent engagement, but maybe that's wrong. So, yeah, if you could, it'd be good to hear what you think. I apologize for not being clear about that one.
In this process, let me know when you want me to talk about it.
I'll leave that to Maya.
How about Judy, if we hear from folks on their initial reactions and then we can jump into some details? Okay, thank you. Laurel?
So my, my issue with this goes back to what a goal is. And these are huge ideas. And the reason that I believe you're proposing this is because you're staying within the, within these huge ideas, but the reality is we have to create goals that we can then ask our one employee to help facilitate this. And we have to be able to measure that, you know, if that is happening in the outcome. And then to say we, whether we executed it or not. And I don't see that for many of the things written here. So these are, these are things we can work on, but they're not board goals. A board goal is something that can act, is why I sent that, because I was hoping people would think about these in terms with something which we all work on. Because I don't find it equitable that people that have more time to be on several committees are on lots of committees and then other people are not. I mean, I understand in some terms we have to have this, but I can see how this will end up being a few people basically leading everything that's happening. I would very much like to see us as a board pick a few goals. I, I was going to propose that we do them for more than one year because I have noticed in other school districts, they do them in three to five year increments, depending, one, three, five. And we pick big goals, at least in the small time I've been here, that don't get done. So we can pick some of the ones from last year that we all chose to have. And then we can also pick a few of the things that are actionable to do. If we pick things that have no matrix around them, I believe we're setting up our employee. And it's not appropriate. We need to set them up for absolute success and to be supportive of them, to be good bosses. If we're not doing that, this is fundamentally not, these are not goals. They're all wonderful ideas and should be happening, but the problem is, and the reason that there's a problem is you're not, we're not, I don't see other people willing to call them what they are, which is they're, they're not goals. Some of them are, but a lot of them are not.
Thank you, Laurel. I think that one of the things we have to agree on is when we say executable, if they are long-term goals, then of course, we wouldn't expect the goal to be achieved in one year. So that, that's something we have to decide on or not. I think historically, at least last year, we spent a lot of time lamenting not completing goals. But if we define goals as having a longer term vision, then we might have a different concept of what constitutes a goal.
But you can still measure that. You can still measure each year what's happening and where, how far you moved in something. So that it doesn't have to be completed, you're right. But there's a way to show where the movement has happened.
Exactly. I, I think that, I think everyone would probably be in agreement with that. Michelle?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in alignment with what you had mentioned, Laurel, and that I, I'm not, I'm not sure that all goals are quantitatively measurable, but also that goals are meant to be set at a high mark. And they will, many of them will take more than a year. But that's, I think that's what we're striving for and I, I can see what you're saying about measuring, but it's also just setting a high mark.
Thanks, Michelle. It reminds me of looking at that acronym and for me, the A that I would choose would be aspirational. But I, I, I would like us to aim high, even if we don't achieve those things within a timeframe that maybe even suits our tenure on the board. Gordon and then Alicia. Laurel, do you have your hand raised because you want to be back in the queue? Okay, Gordon and then Alicia.
I'll wait until everybody else has had a chance to talk.
Alicia?
Thanks, Maya. Well, I have to say I'm with Laurel, I love SMART goals. I, I read these and they are very aspirational, but I was looking for more clarity on the goals. So when I read this, I can see in some of the further down where it's like community engagement, there's some ideas that could be goals. I also, I don't know when we're going to talk about how. We've got the what, and then we have determined the how, which usually, you know, I would have looked to staff to do that, but my concern is if there are board members that are now part of these smaller subcommittees to bring back ideas to the board, my guess is those have to be noticed and that has to be in public. And then I think about the staff time. But I would, I would like us to pair this to a more reasonable, what we can actually achieve and more clarity. Because as we're unclear, as that goes through the organization, it magnifies by 10, 15, 20, 100, 200%. So what does this mean to the person in the classroom that's confused? It does, it's very, it is magnified. So I'm real interested in looking at how we can be more and bring more clarity to these. So, and also, I, I really, I'm glad Judy brought up parent engagement because as I listen to folks talk, I understand they aren't seeing it the same way that we're talking about it, that Judy's talking about it. And not, we don't have clarity on the board around what, what parent engagement is as it relates to what is being proposed. So glad we're going to get some time to talk about that as well. Thanks.
Before I move on to Gordon, Lisa has forwarded this document to us. It's all at the top of our emails. Is it okay if I close the screen so we can all see each other clearly? Or would you like me to keep this up? I can always pull it back up if folks want. Someone's demanding I keep it, then I'm going to stop sharing. Gordon?
Thanks. So I guess I wanted to respond some to, to the things that, the points that you raised, Laurel. I, I don't know if they should be called goals or something else, and I don't, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not insulted if they get called areas of work. And I agree that there's a bunch of things that are not actionable here. And I guess the way I'm thinking of it has to do partly with, with how do we think of our own role? And I think that there's a bunch of things here that we don't know yet what the actionable goals are. I could say at least for myself, I say, we want more mental health supports. Does that mean we need more counselors or more school psychiatrists or more people in the central office working on 504 and IEP plans? Or different school schedules? The truth is, I'm not sure. And I don't think we can be sure until we have some kind of process that involves the people with different, you know, with different, with expertise that comes from students and parents and counselors and, and people in the district. And so if we said, and I don't, I know this isn't what you were saying, but how I got to is I thought, oh, if we just said to Andy, we want mental health to be better, it's like, okay, nice, but meaningless. But we don't have the, the like really concrete measurable thing. And I think the same is true for a number of these, like to improve inclusion and outcomes for students with disabilities, I think is, I mean, I, I think everybody has named as one of the key goals, but like exactly what that should be, even exactly what are the right outcomes to measure? I don't, I, I haven't heard that we know. And so it's like, we know, we're not yet at the point where we can get to SMART goals. And so how I'm thinking of it is that the board has a role that is, I, I think, and this does get to like people, you know, having a couple of people go deeper than everybody can afford to do on everything, to say, we don't just want to say, Andy, make mental health better. And we're also not at the level of implementation, like where we are is at the level of trying to be smart together with the other people who have expertise, probably all of whom have more expertise than we do in some way or another, and being part of a process that comes up with those goals. So that's a, that's a kind of in-between role for the board where we're. So that's, I guess that's how I'm thinking of it. I get the thing of like, some people will be more involved than others based on time and that that's not fair. But I think for me, I guess I think, and I can say I'm one of the people who also has a full-time job, but that the, to me, it's worth it because it means we'll be able to tackle more things. So, so that's why if we call these, you know, areas we want to work in that are not yet actionable goals, okay, it's, but it still seems to me like that's why I landed here. Thanks.
Laurel?
So I'm just going to say what, everything you just said, Gordon, is Andy's job, not ours. All those things that you were defining and saying, we need to understand and do, it's not our job. Our job is to set policy. So that's why the, most of the things I put in were around policy and us creating policy. Our job is not to define how everybody in the district does what they do. And we don't have to understand all of it. It'd be impossible, along with everything you do, running a whole department at the university, to do that as well. And I think the confusion is these are great ideas and everybody wants to do them and Andy has heard them. But our job is to say, our goal is something, I'm going to pick something I said, which is the expulsion, to write policy around that and to create and work with the district and district staff to make sure it's airtight and that we're using, what is it called, a behavioral assessment that is equitable? And I hope I said that right. Using the tools there, but that's all their job. We are in the weeds deep with this proposal. We, we should not be this far in. We have to, the person that we gave the job to is going to do the job well. And so far, I've been impressed. And so if we keep what I think, and I think this comes from 20 years, at least in my case of watching 20 years of frustration and the job not being done well. And I understand where it comes from, but I think we have to, if you make outcomes that are not measurable and then you are not on the board, the next person can say, you didn't do this, Andy, you're out of here. We have to, we cannot set people up like this. It's a total setup. Everything I'm reading is a total setup. I, I mean, I'm just going from what I know from working for the government and understanding how to do strategic plans and everything I see here, we can't, they're beautiful ideas that cannot, he, I mean, Andy can say, yeah, I did that. And we're going to be like, okay, because there's no way to measure it. So please, please look at this in another way because if you vote for these things, which most of them I can not vote for, I feel we are telling, we are not respecting the person we hired to do this job.
Judy? You're muted, Judy.
I did appreciate that. I'm definitely understand SMART goals and think that, and, and I also want to be aspirational and I realize everything can't be measured in numbers. And we're not going to get there in a year. But I do think maybe part of the conversation we need to have is, there was nothing in here really mentioned or very little about students. And so if we want to improve mental health, for example, or really what are we saying? And, and what would that look like? What is it? It might not be numbers, it might not be actual looking at kids' scores here or there, but it might be surveys or it might be fewer reports that we're getting in, you know, referrals. It might be that kids actually get a different kind of response if something happens. But we should be able to see something tangible that we have to figure out what the, that is, that we're looking for. What is that outcome we're looking for that would tell us we've improved mental health supports for kids and staff? What, what is it? Or that we've, the equities, the inequities and expulsion and suspension are no longer there or they're significantly reduced. So I, I agree that we have to do a little more work to figure out what it is and be more specific about the what. And then also that Andy and the, the team and 4J, our staff should figure out how. And then do we need to change any policies to support that had happened? We could have policies that are inhibiting what we want to see. We need to act on that.
So I put myself into the queue just to add in a little bit, and then I'll go back into just calling on people. But I think that at the root of a lot of this conversation and are seeing this so differently is a, a difference in idea of, of what we are supposed to do as a board. And because when you, when you said Laurel, that we're a policy board, that makes complete sense. And that's what I was coming to say myself. And the SMART goals to me are a guideline for what Andy needs to do. Those are managerial goals. We're not managers. That's not our, that's not our job. And to me, it's the overarching priorities that we need to identify and not the specifics. The specifics are what I see is Andy. The specifics are what I see is Andy's role. I, I would like to suggest that we have missed a component of this process that I don't know if it's been part of the 4J practice or not, but it certainly wasn't last year. I know a number of us were able to hear from the Corvallis mental health inclusive, integrated mental health model. And, and I don't know who had the chance to talk with the superintendent from Corvallis, but I spent quite a bit of time talking to him. And he emphasized that, for example, their success with mental health has meant seven years of mental health being on their, on their goals. But he also emphasized that their goals are done in collaboration with the superintendent. And I think that we've spent a lot of time talking about what Andy can and cannot do, or shouldn't, shouldn't be asked to do, or should be asked to do. But we're, we're talking around Andy when we should be talking with Andy. So I, I would like to suggest, we obviously can't come to a place where we're gonna be voting tonight. So if somebody would suggest at the beginning of the meeting to postpone the vote or to table it, I think that we would all be in agreement that we're not at a place to vote yet. But I think that this conversation needs to, we're missing probably the most important player in it, which is, which is Andy. If, if we are to embrace a model similar to the Corvallis model. So that's, that's what I would like to suggest. And I would like to hear feedback from folks as to whether that's happened before, if it was helpful. If it hasn't happened before, if people are open to that, I think that creating goals in isolation of the person who's going to have to execute them is, is not setting anyone up for success. And, and it's also feels a little, I'll, I'll leave it at awkward, but I feel a stronger word about it. That's where I'm standing now in terms of our next steps. And I see Gordon and then Laurel.
Thanks. So a couple of things. One is, I think that it's important to distinguish between the goals that we're adopting tonight as things to work on and the goals that the superintendent is gonna be evaluated by. I, I, I think I feel pretty similar to you Laurel. I don't know exactly what you're thinking in terms of, I'm pleased with what Andy has done. And I feel like there's a lot of things where we're working in, in a similar, a good direction. And I, I have confidence that things are gonna go well. But that there's a separate process that's related to these goals, but it's not necessarily this where leadership makes up, okay, here's the actual things that the annual evaluation is gonna be based on. And I, if it was this set of things, I would agree with you a thousand percent. You can't say, oh, improve mental health. You didn't do, right? Okay, nobody's gonna do that. You know, that's, that's, I would agree, right? It's like impossible and not even defined things to me. But I think that's a separate thing. So I don't think that we have to, I don't think that we have to treat these as if this is the thing by which the superintendent is gonna be evaluated and make them just exactly that small or that concrete, especially since a bunch of these are gonna be things that play out over multiple years and he's gonna be evaluated year by year. I also think that there are, you know, there are some things like, and I think about expulsion in this category, that you could adopt a policy that really would specify what we want. Like if, for instance, if we said our policy is every expulsion decision has to be signed off by, by the board before it gets enacted. And our policy is that there can't be, expulsion can't be enacted disproportionately on different groups of students. You've pretty much said like, what, like you've captured a lot of it concretely how it should work. But that's not true of a lot of other areas. Like I, there's not a policy we could make right now to make there be more engaging classes so that more kids actually had at least one thing they looked forward to coming to school in every day, or so that fewer teachers quit because they felt like they were respected and supported as autonomous professionals. Like those are real things and they're tangible things, but we can't, if we just said those words in policy, obviously be meaningless. And there's not something that is corollary to what there is like in the expulsion case that is, that is defined enough. Their writing policy is enough. And and I also think there's things, you know, to what you said Judy. I, I personally think there are a lot of things that are really important that there's not a numerical, you know, numbers may be part of how you see it, but there's not a numerical gauge for. How do we gauge student mental health? I don't know, but I'm not convinced that there are some survey out there that you say, oh, kids are 3% happier this year. I could say nobody's taking their own life, but that's, that's obviously what, what we all want. But in other ways, you know, it may come down to evaluations at the school level, at the class level, at the student level, at the, like there's, it's not clear how to do that. And so I think that there are really important things that we have to work in. And I would say that, you know, also our responsibility is not just policy, our responsibility is also budget. So it may be that we disagree because I do think that it's appropriate for us to be doing this kind of work at the, at the working group level, like we're doing with some other things. In order to, you know, like we're doing with the North Region, like we're doing or will be doing, I think with the Equity Committee, right? Which is, we're not, we're not saying we're the only experts, but we wanna be in there because we do make budget decisions about are we hiring more counselors or more nurses or more whatever. And so I think that we, I guess that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Thanks Gordon. Laurel?
Yeah, so I would say, the reason I said the SMART stuff is because there are a way to make goals. They aren't goals. As you said, you call them SMART goals. They are a way to ident- accurately identify what can happen. And also, we, if you make a matrix, it doesn't have to be that it's an, on a numerical matrix. It could be, these many things were done this year towards student mental health or something like that. These are things that we would, we would do as far as that. But there's a way to look at that and see what has been done. What did we ask to be done? What has been done? What did the district bring to executing it? But there's no way to do that for, make sure everybody understands equity. You know, it, the, how, how do you quantify that? I mean, it's important and maybe that should be something that we ask for. But that's, it's, I look at that and I'm like, great idea. Also, when I was supervising people, I wanted to make sure I never gave them things that felt impossible to execute. Cuz that is just soul destroying to somebody. To be like, I, I have not, I don't know, there's no way to do this, but I have to do it. I also wanna say, if you wanna change this, I don't know if there's a policy, but I know I'm, I don't have enough screens to look it up right now. But if we're making board goals, are we making board goals? Are we making superintendent and board goals? Are we changing that policy? What is, I, I heard a big change being floated, but it, as a board, we decide on that altogether. So if we're going to change it, we would have to vote to change how we're doing this. And we'd have to, I, I would think of, maybe you've already had a conversation with Andy about this. We would have to be asked, asking Andy outside of a meeting, like, what do you have? You know, so we need to, the way this works is that we work together, we vote on things and then we, then we work on that. And that would be almost scrapping all this and starting over, which after eight hours of this is mind boggling. So is, is that what you were proposing Maya? Because I, I found that very confusing. You're muted.
I'm not proposing changing them from board goals. Andy makes his own goals. And honestly, I think that Andy's evaluation comes based on whether he has achieved those goals. I'm proposing that we involve Andy in the conversation and the construction of our goals. To use that same reference that I did before, that's, that's how Corvallis does it. They are board goals, but they are made in collaboration. I'm talking about collaborating. I'm not talking about having Andy do the work for us. I'm talking about not talking about what Andy can and cannot do without bringing him into the conversation. And if we're not gonna bring him into the conversation, I don't think it's fair to, to, to say what we believe he can or cannot do, or what's fair or not fair. I think he's a very capable and qualified person. Otherwise, he wouldn't be our superintendent. And I think it would be important to include his input. But like I said, that was a suggestion and I appreciate the feedback. I'm not sure what you're saying is that you don't want to or that you do, but I am curious if people.
I want clarification. So I think you clarified it.
Awesome. And I don't think it requires a vote to say that we wanna open this up to include the, the insight that Andy might be able to offer regarding.
As far as I'm concerned, I, I, I would, I expected that at any time. So anytime if you have opinions on this, Andy, that'd be great because, you know, that we're asking your staff to do. And we need to know, I mean, you're already doing a lot of things this year that is quite a bit of work. So we need to know what is.
So that it sounds like you support the idea I just proposed of bringing Andy into the collaborative way.
I was talking.
I appreciate it. Michelle?
I feel like you cut me off on purpose, but that's normal.
I didn't realize that you weren't done. Please continue Laurel.
So I had asked, I had asked Andy a question when you interrupted me. So I was just wondering, and you had your, did you wanna speak to that at all? Andy, I don't wanna set you up, but is there, what ways can we, can you look at this and all these 16 things? And then come back to us and say, you know, this is what we're already, this how, this is how big this is. This is how many, many personnel hours this takes, you know, this, you know?
Sure. What, what I'm doing is listening to the conversation, really taking a look at the, the priorities within the big categories. Thinking about how we could, which ones would be more easily condensed to SMART goals? Which ones might need some further conversations so that we could agree on the things that would maybe be measurable? Or the information that we would wanna collect to see if the, we were making progress as a board and superintendent team in the right direction. Some definitely, I believe, are just out of the nature of the priority itself, multi-year goals when thinking about increasing pathways. I don't think that anybody would be happy to, for me to say, well, we had two, now we have three, so boom, I win. You know, that would be evolving over time and, and really changing, I think from year to year as we develop, we would have some greater expectations. Some of them I think would be relatively easy to do. They're, they're, they're more like a, a task. I'm thinking about HR policy for pay equity as an example. Once we get to a place where you feel as though you have a list of priorities, that that the goal feels as though you're, you're in good faith, working on behalf of the community, then we'll organize staff to get it done and come back to you and say, this is how we would prioritize these things in order of them getting done, given what we know about constraints on staff or momentum benchmarks throughout the year. And, and some will obviously take, take, take a while to, and I wanna make sure that, that the board as a whole understood the types of things that needed to happen as a runway up to seeing measurable progress in a particular area. Cuz some of them are gonna take a lot of relationships and budgeting, things that won't look as though much is being done, but in fact is setting the stage for bigger things to come later. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Andy. Judy?
Great. Thank you. Yeah. I, I also feel like the superintendent having his feedback about what's going on, ongoing is important. And, you know, what's achievable, what isn't. I guess I was under the impression that was something we were going to do. And we talked about that during our two retreat times. So it wasn't like a new concept. And so I think that's important to interject that. But I just, I'm, I, and I, I, what I'm hearing, I agree that the board's role is policy and budget. It also can be this help in partnership with the superintendent and the community set strategic direction. And I feel like that's what we are doing right now. And, you know, we've had the Vision 2020 strategic plan. It could be outdated. It might be time to completely rethink that. But you know, I think in that, that's a multi-year, this is where we're headed. This is our vision, strategic, you know, strategic 2020. We can then set benchmarks, what we wanna do this year. It gives the superintendent and staff a real solid pathway that the board is really helping lead and guide. And I think that's sort of what we're talking about. And that makes a ton of sense to me. I don't know how we do that, but that, if we're gonna do multi-year visioning, that's, I believe, the appropriate way to go. And then to Laurel's point and everyone else, we can be really measurable. This year, we think we can make some movement in this direction or these sub-goals. So I don't know how that sounds to other board members or the superintendent, but I'd be interested.
Gordon, and then Andy?
Thanks. What do I wanna say? One is, again, I do not think we should restrict ourselves to things that are quantitatively measured because that has been part of the problem of education of the last 20 years cuz some of the most important things can't be reduced to numbers. And then everything gets driven by the things that can be reduced to numbers. You, you skew the system. The, so I know that we're not gonna agree tonight. Obviously, we're gonna talk for a certain amount of time and, and move on. We're not gonna vote on this tonight. But I just wanted to, I guess, try again to explain where I'm at. Like, so looking at the equity goal and what I have on this matrix, and these are, these are words from, from Robin Cork's report that I, I think are quotes from, they're not from me, they're from other board members. People said they wanna review last year's climate survey and figure out what we're doing concretely to make things better. Effectively center equity with measurable outcomes based on using the equity lens. Right? So that's like a goal of getting to the point where we have measurable outcomes. If we don't have them yet, which is, is my understanding, that to me, that doesn't mean that therefore, it obviously doesn't mean therefore, we shouldn't do this. Right? So maybe the word is priority more rather than goal, right? But that's basically what we're doing is saying, where does the board wanna spend focus, its attention and energy this year in trying to get things done? So to me, it doesn't matter if it's called a priority or goal. And I could say the same about CTE. I mean, Laurel, you raised, should we have a regional high, a regional CTE high school or regional high school program? The truth is, I don't know. I, I agree completely that we need to strengthen CTE and expand the number of pathways. I don't know if regional high school is it. And so I think that it is appropriate for us, together with other parts of the community, to be involved in trying to figure that out at the big picture level, not at the tiny detail level. And so that's something too, where we couldn't, we could say expand CTE, which doesn't mean anything. But we can't say more, we can't say, oh, definitely do a regional high school cuz we're not sure that that's right. That we, there's no way to avoid the fact that we have to get deeper into it before we know what the, what the more concrete things are that should be done. Thanks.
Andy?
Thanks. I, I forgot to mention that, that on some of these, given the way that they ultimately look and which ultimately get you know, prioritized as either priorities or goals. I'll be able to say to members of the board, this is what we would be asking from you to support the district moving forward, either relationships with community agencies or policy changes, potentially new policies. So it's, it's definitely, I think throughout throughout the process, working in, in any of all of these, it's gonna be, it's gonna be us working together, obviously. Me as the superintendent and staff, you as a board and the community. So good conversation all the way around.
Thanks, Andy. Laurel? You're muted Laurel.
Thanks. I hear what you're saying about CTE and regional high school. That was, like, as I said in our meeting, was the rainbow unicorn, right? That'd be awesome. But also, I, you know, in talking to people, I hear that maybe that's not a great idea. You know, maybe, you know, start smaller but still big in that we have a place where all our high schoolers can go somewhere. And if people from other places wanna send their kids to our stuff, they can too. And cuz some, cuz of course, the way the legislature moves money around is never conducive to making everybody work together. So anyway, I hear you on that. is never conducive to making everybody work together great. Um, so anyway, I hear you on that. And I do hear that as a goal, because that's where you talk about ideas and you move them around. You say, what do you think of this? And we work as a board, not as a subcommittee, but as a board to say, well, this is what I was hoping for. This is what I was hoping for. And this is what I was hoping for. And then you get down to, along with the superintendent is always part of this, um, to what, so what are the first actions, right? And that's what I, what I understood from last year, how board goals work. Um, and that excites me. I think that's a wonderful way to do it. And right, at the, at the beginning, you can't quantify it. I, the thing that worries me when somebody just says, um, equity is everybody has a different definition of equity. Um, when we're talking about, you know, uh, there was another one on here, um, oh, it's when Judy was mentioning parent involvement and Alicia said something. What does that mean to everybody? What is parent involvement? I think it's really important that our definitions, I know our equity definitions do not match. Because there's people that say equity all the time here and have no idea what it means. So it's one of those words now that just get kind of thrown around, but we need to know what it means. And so we can't set our superintendent up to say, hey, could you make sure everybody understands this? When we don't even understand it. And that's what I mean by that is not a smart goal. It's, it'd be great. It's something we're working towards. I know we have things in the works around understanding these things more. But we are not there. And it's not our job to, to just say, everybody needs to do this somehow, you know? We, we're not sure how, but maybe. It needs to be something that we can actually do. I'm, I'm, you know, I, you know, I am willing to, as long as people, because I see many people here not budging at all. This is going to be it. This is how we do it. We're going to do the utopian goals that have really no definition and that's it. But I would really like to see some movement to say, to, for us, because we need to meet somewhere. And so I keep throwing out ideas, because if I'm going to bring a load of crap, I'm going to bring a shovel. But I don't feel, I see anybody trying to meet anywhere here. I'm really, I'm willing to move, because we need to get somewhere. But I, I, you know, I would like people, other people, to see other people willing to move. Thank you.
Okay, so then we can also talk about doing it like we did last year and using dots to vote board goals into action and to remove board goals, if people want to talk about using that method also. Um, that certainly is a way to make a decision. Um, it definitely takes less time than trying to use some collaborative problem solving. But I agree that flexibility is definitely key. Um, I, I see us all fully engaged in this process. I, I'm hoping that everyone else feels as committed to being flexible and seeing what other people are saying. Alicia and then Gordon and then.
Thanks Maya. You know, I look at this list and I'm just like, oh my gosh. Look at this board and how much they want to get done and how much they care and how much they're committed to changing this district. So let's, let's celebrate that. And then let's say, given our lit, our time together, our role in all of this, how can we make that happen? How can we do this? How can we honor that? These are really important to all of us. So I'm going to do a little side note and say, absolutely superintendent should have his mic on the whole time, that we all have our mics on and be involved in this. That's, that's the most effective way. So I'm going to throw out an idea. I'm sure it's not perfect, but it's, it's an idea of how maybe to move forward a little. Okay? So I would say we could assess all of the big categories and the things under the big categories. You know, what's, what's doable in a year? What's doable? Is it multi-year? And they may be all multi-year. I don't know. I haven't done that. And it's just one way just for us to know, not for us to decide. And then we could do something like rank, back to your thing, but not eliminate. But say in the next three months, we're going to look at these three things. So let's, let's take an example of the CTE and the unicorn pony, no unicorn, whatever it is. Um, big audacious gold unicorn. But if we said in unicorn rainbow, thank you. If we said, we as a board, we're going to look at how to, and we, we give it a big category name, like how do we increase opportunities of CTE for students in our district and others? So that's what we're going to do. We look at Andy and we say, could you come and bring us ideas? And then, of course, we bring our ideas and we sit at the table together and with staff and with the superintendent and with what we know, we say, here are the goals to achieve the end of this audacious goal, or this, you know, this big thinking. And here they are. And we worked through a couple of them, because I bet we could work through almost all of these where we have the big goal, but then we also have what Gordon tried to do, which was, and here's how we're going to achieve it. And I think that's where I stumble is, and this is how we're going to achieve it. I, I'd like to do that as a board. Um, and I think we can. So I don't know if this is making sense. I'm looking at you guys and I'm not sure if you have questions. I'm just trying to figure out a way, because I think once we get going on it, we'll be really, we'll get better at it. And then the point about the policy, sure, there's not a policy that can change or fix it, but if there's a policy in the way from doing it, we can, you know, address that. Or if there's a policy that supports something that we want to do, we can address that. So it's not just policy. So anyway, back again, so it does require us to rank Maya. And maybe it's just the ones that are most important right now, although they, I don't know that that's a good answer. Or that we can test or achievable. Anyway, I'm going to stop talking. I've talked a long time. But that's my thinking, that we find a way that we practice and that we get started. So there you go. Thanks.
Just in response to that last point, Alicia, I think that ranking is very different than what we did last year, which was select in the process that meant eliminating. And it was honestly a painful experience and, and it was brought up all year long, um, about how disappointed we were that certain goals were not chosen. I, um, I, I don't know how the ranking would happen, but I don't think that's necessarily, uh, uh, an idea that for me is off the table. I think that you have to select, you know, priorities. You can't do everything at once. It's like cleaning the kitchen. You have to start somewhere. If you move around in a hurricane, nothing will end up getting done and you'll end up trying to reorganize a kitchen cabinet and it'll be everywhere. Um, so make a bigger mess that we're trying to clean up. That, that is, that is what I would like to avoid.
Okay, can I throw in one more thought, which I had down, but I didn't, which is, we set a time when we revisit and re, and, and rank again. And that's, I remember now, that's why the multi-year, we don't have to fix it all in the next three months. Um, but if we can, if we, it, it is a little bit like a strategic plan. But if we can see those are multi-years, I think we can breathe and and we can rank and we can get to work.
And we can, this is, and, and the word revisit is, you can look at it revise, right? You can, we don't, none of this is written in stone. These aren't like something that can't be, we, we can all edit, right? We can change these things. This should be, we can consider our goals as a living document, not a document that's set, um, and, and is not movable. In my opinion, and I don't believe that there's anything that dictates that we have to have them established and can't budge on them at all. But in order to prioritize, we still have to identify. And that leads us back to the situation that we find ourselves in now. Which is why, from the very beginning, I wanted to identify overarching goals personally, because I saw so much overlap and agreement in our specifics, but there were themes and patterns. And themes and patterns are often where you find the place of compromise. And then it's after you identify the themes and patterns that you can get down to the nitty gritty, including what are we going to prioritize first? And maybe I was just copying Andy with his three rocks and maybe I wasn't. Maybe I just found it by myself. I don't know. But it feels like an approach that, um, it's nice to be able to say, oh, this falls under this category. It feels very nice to me. Um, and it feels, when I say it feels nice, I don't mean like, oh, it makes me feel warm and fuzzy. I mean, it makes me feel like these things are doable when there's categories that all seven of us have identified as a priority and a goal. And there's goals and then there's sub-goals. And I think that's maybe where we are in disagreement is what is a goal? I think that that's, Laurel said that specifically. We don't agree on the concept of what is a goal. Gordon and then Judy?
Thank you. Um, I think maybe I'm wrong. I think maybe in some ways, we're not as far apart as it seems. Like, I, I agree entirely. We need to hear from the superintendent on, on all these things. And I also think the process looks like what Laurel and Alicia described, like we look at this option, we look, you know, we kind of try, look at various options and try to figure out what's the right way forward. But, um, I do think that, that can't be just with the superintendent. And like as much, you know, I have tremendous, uh, confidence in Andy, but the reason we have teachers and EAs and parents and students involved is because they bring experience and expertise that you don't get when you're the superintendent, just like the superintendent brings a whole lot of expertise that you don't get if you just work in one classroom. So that's, to me, that's why we, these things have to be approached through some kind of working group. But other than that, I, I agree entirely that the process should be kind of like that. Okay, is it regional high school? Is it something else? And then, and that that's what we need to, and then that's, that's a decision of the whole board. But, um, if we say that everything, that whatever we're going to do, we're going to do as a committee of seven as the whole board, it means we're going to do one or two of these at most. We're going to say, we'll do CTE and mental health and not students with disabilities or equity or parent engagement or something. And I think like, you know, we have, tonight, we have a proposal on student voice, which did not come from the seven of us working on it. It came from a couple of people on the board, putting a lot of work in with some other people who I don't even know who they are, who are not on the board, and bringing us a proposal. And maybe we'll decide it's not right, or we'll revise it or whatever. But if we had waited until all seven of us could do that, we, I don't know when we'd have students coming to meetings. And I feel like that is, that is the model that lets us do more than one or two things, because we have these pressing things. And I, I'm not necessarily opposed to the ranking, but I, A, I don't want to, I don't want the ranking to be based on, we're going to do everything as seven, and therefore, the number of things that we realistically are going to do, like we should just stop the ranking after two, because the rest is fiction. And I also think some things are, it's not just a question of um, what do we think is most important? Or even what are we, as the seven of us, interested in putting our time and energy into? Like, we could say CTE, and then if it turns out that teachers and administrators are so short-staffed, they don't have the capacity to do it, and the, and the community partners don't come forward, then we get to the point where you say, you know, like, we think this is really important, and we can't, and we can't make something happen this year. So again, I feel like we have to get, you know, these are, these are the complicated things. They're not the straightforward things. And, and, um, but I think we have, you know, just like you said, Alicia, we have a lot of energy. We have, uh, new administration, we have new members on the board, we have a people on the board with a lot of different kinds of expertise. And I think we can do a lot this year, um, but that we have to not do everything as, we have to ultimately do everything as seven. But we have to do the groundwork before that in smaller kinds of working groups with other people. Thanks.
Judy? I agree with you, Gordon. I think we are, we are actually closer together than not. And these are really exciting directions for sure. Um, I think, I, I think I'm getting a little bit bogged down, because you know, these are not the only things that I know our district leadership, our superintendent and leadership are working on. For example, um, are we going to, are we just sort of putting aside that all the, the things that be worked on under 2020 or SIA and how they fit in? Obviously, we aren't. You know, specifically, one of the big things we were making some progress on was trying to diversify our workforce, putting a lot of energy into growing our own staff and then maintaining them. And so I think it's important for us to also know there are a whole lot of things that support what we are really trying to achieve and as we define it, um, together, but, um, that there are all these other things that are helping us get there. So what, what, what's the bandwidth for doing more? What are we continuing? What could we let go of? You know, all that sort of fits together in my mind. And it could be, we're done with, you know, the 2020. But I think that has been a centerpiece for planning for the district for a while. And I think we should at least be deliberate about saying, we're done here or we aren't. I mean, there's a lot of work with the buildings and all of that too. So I know it sounds overwhelming, but it's relevant. And some, some of that work is really moving in the direction we want to move.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, when, when you were talking, Judy, the thing that kept coming back to my mind is that so many of these things are symbiotic. One feeds the other, feeds the other. Um, so it, seeing them in a vacuum and not in a bowl of the collection is not helping us to see them as separate things as opposed to interconnected things. Like, maybe it's not a Lego set, but it will be a Lego creation, right? Alicia, unless you're okay with Andy going first, because I saw him raise his hand in response to Judy. Okay, so then Andy, Alicia, then Laurel.
Yeah, tha- thank you. Um, what I, what I like is that, uh, that the list of these sixteen areas of, of priority really is a pretty accurate reflection of the aspirations that the individual members of the board have. New things always come up. I mean, it, it may well be three months from now, something happens and we all come to the realization that we need to reassess our priority and focus in on something that was unexpected. Uh, but I know, for example, if, if expulsions were not on this list, uh, it will remain an issue of importance to, to many, if not all of you. If, if CTE did not somehow make it on this list, I know that that would remain an important issue. Uh, I, I, I'd much rather be able to take a look at your direction and your priorities and not just blindly and myopically focused only on those things, but that gives me a sense of how we can, um, mobilize the resources that we have and maybe tweak some of our current initiatives to better reflect, uh, what the board sees as priorities for the district. There's a lot of overlap, a, a significant amount of overlap, um, between the things that we as a district are focused on and that you as a board would like to see us prioritize. So it, it would, certainly this represents a significant amount of work, um, but it's work that we will be doing in, in many instances anyway. And so that's helpful. Thank you.
That's very reassuring to hear. Thank you, Andy. Alicia and then Gordon. Laurel, you had your hand. Are you, did you take yourself out of the queue? Okay. Alicia and then Gordon. And I just want to point out that we have five minutes left.
So I have five minutes to talk?
You have two and a half.
Just kidding. So here, here's the deal. Um, I just see us kind of miscueing a little bit, like, you know, I really appreciate what you said, Gordon, which is if we try to move as a group of seven, it, we, takes us a long time to get coordinated on something. But let me back up from that and say, so let me give you the example of we had an, I believe we had, um, and I don't have it in front of me, a goal about the North Region, right? So we had this goal about the North Region. We got together and one of the strategies was to have, uh, a North Region, um, community meet, you know, group. That was the strategy. And then two people went on that. So I'm not saying that couldn't happen. I'm just saying we need to back it up, pick our priorities or somehow get to work on a, uh, uh, to get to. And then it may be that we, uh, decide that a small group is important. It may be that, you know, I assume that Andy would come to us after having talked to teachers and, you know, I mean, after done, doing some of that work. And then we work on our goals. It, it's just, it's a process. I know we all want to get going on this and I, I'm, I'm willing to move. I appreciate Laurel's encouragement that, well, you know, if we aren't, if we all get out of our, our camps, if you will, or our places that we believe are true, to kind of come together with compromise, I have a sense of urgency. I have a sense of urgency and it's, uh, just because I have only nine months left on this board, but that it's October and, and, and we have a gung-ho board, if you will. And let's, uh, let's figure out how we, how we get started on these really important, um, areas. Thanks.
Gordon and then Michelle, and then I think we will probably be out of time, everyone.
So just super quick, just as a, a way to go forward, I just wanted to propose that Maya and I, we'll, we'll come back at some point with a revised proposal and that part of that revision will be talking with Andy and coming back with something based on what everybody said here in those discussions. That's all I got.
That sounds good to me. And, um, I think there's a misperception that there are camps or people who are, I don't know, I, I haven't really had a chance to work with a lot of you. And I haven't had a chance to really even get to know a lot of you. So, um, this is where I see you all and, um, that we did not have clarity on goals before we started. It's discouraging. And, um, I hope that we have more clarity now and we can move forward and get this done. Um, I, I don't feel that I am inflexible in looking at these goals. I, I think that they're all helpful. And I also understand that, um, the superintendent is juggling 10,000 balls. You know, there's a lot going on. There are a lot of moving parts. And, um, we're all aware of that.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. I appreciate all of that. And thank you, everyone. I, um, it's clear we need to revisit this. Um, we also, um, I, I will share with you now, uh, that we will be needing to reschedule our October 24th retreat as it, um, I've been informed that that falls on a holiday. So we are going to have some doodle pulling for the retreat and I am going to take a play out of Judy's book and ask folks to, um, set aside their Wednesdays because we also have other things that we need to do. Um, we have to have an executive session on bargaining. We have, we have things that we need to do. And so, um, I don't, I don't want to find ourselves waiting until February to have our goals finalized because that does not help anyone, um, to spin out about goals and never get them set. So, um, since we're meeting online anyway, if folks could kindly set aside their Wednesdays, please let me or Debbie know if there are Wednesdays that are absolute no, not possible for you. Um, but otherwise, we might need to use an off week, um, to schedule a work session to do this. I, I, I'm not going to say we might need to, I, I anticipate that we will need to if we also want to continue doing the work that we have to take care of. Um, it all has to be done and we need to, we need to be committed to setting this time aside. So I'm, I'm, I'm seeing that there's five of us here. Is that something that at least the five of us can agree to do with our schedules? Okay. Thank you, Michelle, Alicia and Judy and Gordon. And thank you, everyone else. And it's 6:45. Um, Debbie, do we come back on this same link? Do we just shut down our, our videos and our, and mute ourselves?
Please stay on this link and, and this is the one that you'll come back to for the regular sessions.
Okay, thank you so much and I will see you all in 14 minutes.
Thank you.